We need order, don't please rise. May I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening? And please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please take your role.
Alderman Basso, Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kromarski.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor, City Clerk, Judge, Attorney, and Attorney General.
All right, fine, thank you. No special presentations tonight. It's Bass.
I guess there was a special. Hello? Is Bass open?
Yeah, the meeting's open.
Just put him on your speaker for now.
You're gonna be on the speakerphone as we speak.
Okay.
Did you put in the access code?
Is he on here?
Yeah. He's not on here.
Nobody's opened the meeting to access code. Yeah, we did open the meeting. You're supposed to put in the access code and then wait for the X amount of time and they'll say, "Call a roll call," and you say, "Here."
That's the access.
All right, here's the access code, three, four, three, seven, hundred, four, five.
Wait, all the people watching can get in.
Hold up. Over here, go to a call.
No, we won't.
He said, "Nope, nobody from this meeting opened this meeting."
Yeah, let me try again.
Okay.
I'm gonna try it again.
Jack, put him on your speaker for now. Let's see if you can hear you.
Yeah, it's good.
Welcome.
No speaker?
Okay. All right.
You know, technically.
We'll continue. Under consent calendar, we've got two items. The approval of minutes of a city council meeting from June 16th, 2020, along with the approval of payroll and voucher list for the period ending July 2nd, 2020. Would that entertain a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here, yes.
I'm sorry, motion carries.
All right. We've got two sealed bids being opened tonight. Representative RJ N. Engineering will conduct the opening along with the campus.
Sewer, sewer lining, big bid packages first. Benchmark construction, the leadoff.
Technology and number one.
Yes.
All right. So the first bid is from Benchmark Construction. They did submit a bid bond in the amount of 10% and a bid of $288,000, four-hundred-and-eighty-five, two-eight-eight, four-eight-five.
Okay, next is port construction. Addendum as well.
Hey. Submitted a bid bond in the amount of 10%. And a bid in the amount of $222,155, two-two-two, one-five-five. And they do have a proposal bid bond in the amount of 10%. And a bid, the amount of $181,902, one-eight-one, nine-zero-two. So we do have Michael's Corporation. There is a bid bond in the amount of 10% and a bid in the amount of $232,519, two-three-two, five-one-nine.
Initial Power is next. Uh, the addendum?
Yeah.
On the last one? I don't see it on here on the sealed bid.
Okay.
The addendum on Michael's.
They didn't acknowledge it, okay.
Uh, National Power does have the addendum.
And there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from National Power Rodding. The bid amount of $268,825, two-six-eight, eight-two-five.
That concludes the bids for the sewer lining project.
Uh, wasn't there one more?
Yeah. It's all the bids I have.
There, there was one more plan holder, but they did not submit.
But they did not submit.
Correct.
All submitted.
I'll move that we, that we send these to Water and Sewer for consideration.
Second.
Move by Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Kromarski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Next set of bids are from, are for the Manhole Rehabilitation Project. Duke's Innovation will be first.
Who?
Duke's, D-U-K-E-S.
I, I missed that on the list, sorry. There's a proposal bid bond in the amount of 10%. And a bid amount of $392,560, three-nine-two, five-six-zero.
Next is Michael.
What company was that?
This is Duke's, D-U-K-E-S.
Innovative, did you say?
Innovation. Duke's Root Control is what they put on the proposal.
This is the, uh, this is Michael's.
Michael's did submit a bid bond in the amount of 10% and a bid in the amount of $386,901, three-eight-six, nine-zero-one.
Next is National Power.
Who was that last one you just said?
Please enter your access code followed by the.
There is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from National Power Rodding. And a bid in the amount of $514,000, one-hundred-and-twelve dot fifty. Five-one-four, one-one-two point five.
Next is Radina Construction.
Which one?
Yeah, that's.
Well, Duke's should have been number seven, so scratch off one of them.
Either one you can pick.
It's your call.
It could have been two of the same company, same name.
Well, probably not.
Cousins.
They still wanted us to read it more than once.
Two bids for one project.
I've seen it happen.
It's an interesting council.
Yeah.
One high and one low.
I got it, I got it. Okay, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10%, the bid, and a bid amount of $486,044, four-eight-six, zero-four-four.
The last bid submitted for the Manhole Rehabilitation Project is from Kim Construction.
They do have a bid bond in the amount of 10% and a total base bid of $386,517, three-eight-six,
Those are all the bids we have.
Move that we send these bids to the Water and Sewer Committee for consideration.
Second.
Alderman Violet, second by Alderman Kromarski. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. All right.
Thank you very much.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, under my report, I've got a couple of things. As we're getting through this COVID-19 epidemic, as we get through, things are somewhat settled down, settling down, at least in the Chicagoland area, it seems to be. Pale's Heights, we have opened the farmer's market, as we mentioned last time. Things are going very well there, a good flow of people. I think you're gonna start seeing some of the vegetables coming in from the farmers and spur some more interest in the farmer's market, but yeah, if you had a good crowd and a good response to what's The library has opened, you know, somewhat restrictive, but it is in fact open. The playgrounds in town are open now also. You know, we asked people to take care, sanitize them as they use them and, but they are open for the kids to play in the playgrounds and going forward, hopefully that'll be, continue on. The rec center is open again also, somewhat restrictive. You know, in many of these things that we have restrictions, how many people can be in the different facilities, but we're doing the best we can to at least give some, you know, some sense of normalcy as we can to, to the citizens, but that's, that's going forward. And rec, and rec center, and then by way of the pool, the pool will be opening Monday, and Alderman Key will cover that in his report, but we will start having sessions at the pool. Next week's supposed to be close to 100 degrees, a couple of days, so it's taken us a little bit of time to get it, make sure we get more people in there instead of having the restrictions, the initial restrictions from the state. We're only for laps and also for limited lessons and things such as that, which really kind of limited who could actually use the pool. I mean, some of the pools that are open, they are only doing laps and, and lessons, but we are gonna open for general swimming and Alderman Key will cover how those will be done. So, uh, so we're trying again, getting back to some normalcy and as things open up, we will continue to push the, you know, push the envelope as much as we can to get things going. So I'm gonna give credit to all the staff for, you know, working through all this and it's been a hard time for everybody, residents included, we understand. And, uh, I, you know, wish we could just open up everything, but we have to, you know, err on the side of caution, you know, we, for the residents and for the people in town. So that's, that's what we're doing. So, that being said, City Clerk?
No report. Uh, sure, I can do this. I can do it during my report.
Yeah.
Uh, pursuant to the electronic meetings that we're conducting here, I received a letter submitted for comment from Clyde Behrens, B-E-H-R-E-N-S, of 11933 Harold Avenue regarding concerns regarding public safety related to the demonstration protest conducted at Community Park on June 12th regarding the issuance of any permits and other questions related to that demonstration. I'll submit that for the record after the meeting's over. Those were all the public comments that I received.
City Treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Any communications anyone have this evening? If not, we had the citizens addressing the council by, by letter since it is an electronic meeting. Standing Committee, Alderman McGrogan.
Mr. Mayor, no report.
All right. Public Safety, Alderman McGovern?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have no report tonight.
All right. Municipal Grounds and Property, Alderman Basso?
Yes, Mayor, I have no items on the agenda this evening.
All right. Planning and zoning, Alderman Clifford?
I have no report at this time, even though an update was, we had some public hearings in around 83 development and a few other issues around town last week at the rec center, other than that, nothing coming up.
All right. Right, thank you, sir. Recreation, Alderman Key?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first thing I'd like to talk about is Lake Catherine, just like we are, is following guidelines from, from the state and trying to get the facilities open as much as possible to the public. Obviously, they're, they're following the guidelines and on social distancing and, and, and all the cleaning services that have to happen, but the, the facilities are open to be rental and they're doing the canoes and the kayaks again, and they're, they're having some outdoor activities happening soon. And so, you know, go to their website, check out their calendar, and then everything is done through reservations, so you can either stop by Lake Catherine or go online and sign up for the activities there. And as the mayor mentioned, the pool is opening. The, the plan is very well thought out. They've, they're trying to maximize the use of the pool by as many residents as we can. There's three blocks of open swimming each day. Each block will be two hours long. There's a lot of guidelines that are being followed by people are gonna, that are gonna be using the pool, the staff, the lifeguards, and so it's all being done by reservation. You can either go into the rec center and sign up for the pool, or you can do it all online. The fitness center is open and anyone that's been up there, it's always immaculate, but even more so now. There's been extra hand washing stations installed and there's hand sanitizers everywhere. The machines are cleaned by the staff after every use, whether people are there or not. Every half hour or so, the staff goes through and fogs the area for the virus. So it's, it's, we're doing our best to have as many people come over to the fitness center as possible. And our summer camp is underway. Obviously, it's, you know, less than a fourth to accommodate the staffing and how many places we can actually put kids, but that is open and very creative ideas from the, the, the staff are being implemented. Because we've had to cancel all of our activities for 4th of July, the, tentatively, the Parks and Rec staff is trying to put something together for the first three days of October. Maybe have a, a movie in the park, have a concert in the park, maybe have a, a community market, like a farmer's market, but in the evening. There's lots of different things we're, we're, we're trying to organize for the beginning of October, and obviously, that all depends on the different mandates from the state being loosened a little bit. I think we're gonna try and have a movie in the park this month. Some other communities have done this and we're gonna try it maybe at the end of this month at, at Myers Park. We, we did the same thing last year. It's a, it's a bigger area to put the screen up and there's plenty of space to have several hundred people come. Look for information on that on the website at the rec center and as the weeks go by. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think from the resident's standpoint, keep, keep vigilant as far as looking for Facebook advertising and also the website.
Yeah.
As things change and items do become available, you know, we will put them on those, out there so people know when, when they will be. As we can add another program, we will do so. The idea, we've told people, our staff at the recreation center, we want to get people using the parks and have things for our residents and so we, you know, use our creativity as far as getting things going. Will there be maybe a couple concerts actually in August also, so see if we can get that going on. And other net roads of construction, Alderman Kromarski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve a payment to Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for the 2020 roadway resurfacing program in the amount of $249,863.98.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Move to approve final payment to Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for the 2019 roadway resurfacing program in the amount of $30,725.48.
Second. Move by Alderman Kromarski, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Move to approve final payment to Lindahl Brothers Incorporated for the 2019 roadway general maintenance in the amount of $7,650.76.
Second. Move by Alderman Kromarski, second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Move to adopt a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds for the surface transportation local match program through the Southwest Conference of Mayors.
Move by Alderman Kromarski and second by Alderman Clifford. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Basso.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Lasted permit to franchises, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
Water and Sewer, Alderman Violet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the purchase of three security cameras for the Route 83 pump station from KP Technology in the amount of $6,212.95.
Move by Alderman Violet and second by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman. Business and economic development, Alderman Key?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to mention that you did, you did say that the farmer's market is open. That will be going through the middle of October and they've actually added a few more vendors this week, so I think it's up to 20 vendors now.
Hmm.
So it's, it's, everyone's really following that, the plan for walk-around where you come in and exit and stuff, and everyone's wearing masks and, and the vendors have seemed to be doing good business, so that's a good thing. And that concludes my report.
Maybe in, in line with that, this year we did not have the Car Classic, but in fact, Bob Stars, it came to be about a month or two ago and said, you know, since we're not gonna have the Car Classic, can we try a Car Parade? So we are in fact going to have a Car Parade. It will be on July 16th at 5:00, leaving right around the fire station and there's a route that's gonna actually go through all, through town and end up backwards started, so people can get in their front yards and, you know, look at all the cars as they go by and hopefully, you know, obviously, it's not gonna be the same, you know, crowds and, you know, festivities we had with the, the car show, but it's, it's something to, you know, put a little more excitement at least into, for that night for, for people who like, you know, who like cars and, you know, we go through town. It is on Facebook. I've seen it. It'll be on our website for the city to give you the route, but it kind of actually goes down 76th Avenue, 983, back through and have a hole and, but there's a whole, whole map that you can, you know, find yourself a spot and cheer the cars on if that's, that so be it. So, and just an observation, I think, I want to give credit to all the restaurateurs in town. I think they've adapted fairly, fairly well to the restrictions we've had placed upon us by the state and, you know, whether it be with the tents and the combination of the indoor dining and the tents. It seems like, you know, they're doing fairly well. I mean, obviously not to where they would be at 400% capacity, but, you know, a couple that I've talked to are, you know, have, you know, have said things are going, you know, going okay. So we're looking forward to, you know, that and to get out there and, you know, protect and, and use the, use facility, use the restaurants we have in town. I mean, if you're gonna go out to eat, you know, please use them. I mean, they've, they've, they stayed in business for the most part, you know, through this thing and let's try to support them in keeping the business so when we get back to, to whatever's gonna be considered normal after this is all over. So again, I give them a lot of credit too for making it through this. Cable TV, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I got one little comment. During the last few weeks, the Channel 14 has been producing Aaron. A lot of video promotions and the farmer's market, the city news, the Shoma Center, police alert on fireworks, and they created a Zoom video on, on the opening instructions for, of the Pale's Heights Library. They also plan on working on, to promote our city restaurants and share their, and share their policy in complying with the Phase 4 guidelines. This is something that they have in the planning stage and as soon as they can turn around and get it, they're trying to get as many restaurants all together into, into one. Kind of like to let everybody know through, through Channel 4 that they can turn around and get out there. A little bit like free exercise.
All right, thank you. Okay? Thank you very much. All right. Any old business? Anyone have? Any new business?
I'd just like to say, maybe you would like to tell the people about the public improvement to Palmer Park with the groundbreaking we had.
We had, you know, the improvements are, you know, Palmer Park, as you know, maybe you don't know, is closed for the season, but there's a massive reconstruction of Palmer Park with a walking track and various ball fields being regraded and new, new equipment in there, so hopefully that'll be done by the, by fall time. People can use it for the fall and maybe, you know, obviously next year, but we had the groundbreaking last week and it's been, it's through a OSLAC grant, a matching grant we got from the state of Illinois, and so we paid for about half of it. So it's, it's, it's a great thing we've been able to take advantage of. So that's, that's in progress right now. Alderman?
So, Mr. Mayor, as the Finance Committee Chairman, I always keep my eyes on things that have a direct impact for our residents. And, you know, part of the revenue that the city gets in is, comes from the tax bills that we all receive. And probably within the last week to 10 days, many of us in the city receive tax bills, you know. I know personally in an effort to try to keep my tax bill down, I tried to figure out a way to take my toilet out, but I couldn't figure that out. And, um, so.
You have to be governor.
Right. I'm sure he had someone work on his. So it's, with all seriousness aside, it's really important to, like, when you look at the tax bills, you know, the, and I've talked to some real estate agents and obviously, especially with the COVID thing, values are not going up, you know, and it's gonna have a direct impact on us. This could be a double whammy. At the same time that property values and assessed valuations are changing, you know, the governor is proposing, which I know a lot of people have been trying to convince them, and I don't know what the Southwest mayor's stance is, to postpone the referendum that he has to increase the state taxes. And I, I just think the timing of this, I, I wish that many, many city organizations, including Pale's Heights, would try to convince them that maybe there's a better time to try to enact this type of, of tax increase because it's gonna have a direct impact. And with property values changing and the tax thing going up for, because there's no limit in the referendum after it gets passed, so they can do whatever they want down the line, if I'm reading it correctly. And I'm sure there's other people here that are probably paying attention to it. So my, my point is, I think that at each meeting, you know, I would like to make people aware of it because it does have an impact for the city, our values, and also your pocketbook. And I think we've all learned that all of us can spend our money more wisely than maybe the way that the governor's running this state. And, you know, I just hope that, you know, Pale's Heights can still maintain its solid financial footings, which is probably one of the strongest ones in the South suburbs, if not the state. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other new business? If that, can a motion adjourn?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Be safe. Be safe.